Ladies, ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to stand for the pledge. At this time, I'd like to introduce Rabbi Yega and Gurgel, Post 3451 of the 606 Club. We have Frank Wanda, who served United States Army in Korea achieving a rank of Sergeant in the Military Police. We have Ron Walensky, who served United States Army achieving the rank of Spec 4 during Vietnam era. We have Joel Tool, active member of 3451 for over thirty years. We have George Grega, Navy, World War II. Gene Besko, Army Veteran, Vietnam. And Gary Scott, Air Force Desert Storm. Also, I'd just like to remind everyone that these veterans are the ones that made sure that Mr. Duffy would not be gone forever. That Mr. Duffy is over at the Steamtown Marathon, excuse me, it's the Steamtown Marathon, the Steamtown Heritage Train Museum, and also a brand-new replacement up on the bridge on Harrison Avenue. Congratulations. It's beautiful. You guys did a fabulous job. Would you like to step up to the podium? The floor is yours, gentlemen. Thank you for your service. Step right up to the podium, guys.
All right, thank you for having us here, and we appreciate what everybody done for the Duffy boy.
No, Duffy, Colonel Duffy had to be taken care of, but you guys made sure that it happened. You weren't gonna let it happen. I'd also thank Joe Wexler, who I know had a-
Joe Wexler was one of the first guys to step up and help us.
And I'm just really thrilled because not only do we have a brand-new replica that's out there, but there's also, we still have the original, and like I said, it's down at Steamtown, and it's at a-
Oh, he's still down in Jersey.
Oh, I thought he was down at, I thought he was over at Steamtown. He's not over there.
Oh, Trump closed the park down.
Well, we're gonna have to get him back to Lackawanna County really soon.
I'm trying to get that done.
Because he spent some time down there working before he ever went off to the Army. Went to get him back where he came from originally.
I hope to get him soon, okay? I'll get with Pat McCabe, and I'll get it done, all right?
If you need any help, let us know.
Okay, thank you.
The floor is yours.
Okay, would you say to pledge allegiance, the flag of the United States?
The United States of America. To the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Would anyone still please stand for a moment of silence? We have a lot of law enforcement that lost their lives between January and February. Virginia State Police, Virginia. Trooper Lucas Dahl was shot and killed as he and a member of the Virginia State Police Tactical Team made entry into a home to secure a search warrant. Milwaukee Police Department, Wisconsin. Police Officer Matthew Rittner was shot and killed as he executed a narcotics and firearms-related search warrant at a home. New York City Police Department, New York. Detective Brian Simmenson was shot and killed while responding to a robbery. Puerto Rico Police Department, Puerto Rico. Agent Alfredo Perez was shot and killed while conducting an undercover operation. Claremont County Sheriff's Department Office, Ohio. Detective Bill Brewer was shot and killed responding to a call from a suicidal man armed with a gun. Baton Rouge Police Department, Louisiana. Corporal Shane Tato was killed in a motorcycle crash. Mobile Police Department, Alabama. Police Officer Sean Tudor was shot and killed. He and several other Tudors, or other officers were attempting to serve an arrest warrant in an apartment complex. And last but not least, Police Officer Natalie Karan was shot and killed responding to a report of three-car vehicle crash near intersection of Fifth and D Street. Please keep our law enforcement and their families and our thoughts and prayers in this trying times with this horrible loss of all these great police officers that are out to keep our streets safe and sound. Just a moment of silence. I'd like to bring this Wednesday, February 20, 2019, Board of Commissioners meeting, 10:00 AM, in the Commissioners' Conference Room at 123 Wyoming Avenue at the Lackawanna County Government Center to order. I'd like to make a motion for the reading and approval of the minutes. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Terriani?
Yes.
Commissioner Malley?
Yes. Ladies and gentlemen, I just wanted to bring this up really quick. I was amazed at this, and, you know, I mean, our first responders just do such a great job across our county, all of them do. You know, we have Dave Hahn in the back room here for emergency services and his 911 operators. You know, I mean, they save lives over the phone. There's so many great things that are police fire, all of them are doing to make our streets safe. But I got, this one was really, really interesting. I'd like to congratulate the Chinchilla Host Company. They had that huge semi turned over on the expressway, and they worked on getting this individual out of this semi for six hours. And if they weren't able to, he would actually, had to have his legs amputated down the spot. But they managed to get him out, and whoever the EMTs and other responders were there, I'd like to congratulate them because I just thought that this was an incredible stellar performance that they put on. And I'm sure this man was bleeding there in pain, but they kept him comfortable enough to, it's horrible to say, but unwrap that truck from being around his legs. So I'd like to congratulate all our first responders, and especially the Chinchilla Host Company on a job absolutely well done. Great job. Okay, we have a presentation for Meals on Wheels. Do we have any here for Meals on Wheels? All right, would you like to come up to the podium? Talk to us about Meals on Wheels and the great things that go on, the interaction between going out and visiting the people and giving them a meal and everything else, and we're gonna have a nice check for you from our, from one of our events.
Wonderful. Thank you, Commissioners, for having me, and I thank Lackawanna County, specifically the Area Agency on Aging and the Department of Human Services for being great partners and serving Lackawanna County. We are blessed and lucky, our commercial kitchen, every single day, just five blocks down on Wyoming Avenue produces 800 meals, hot and cold, and 500 of those are delivered daily to Lackawanna County. During these winter months, which I really would love to be over, we work extra hard. Our volunteers, our staff, go above and beyond, and we are so lucky for the support from Lackawanna County and the municipalities and making sure we have pathways and roads cleared and emergency responders who help us when we need to get to our clients. Because over 65% of our clients oftentimes, we're the only ones they see in a week. So as we celebrate Meals on Wheels of NEPA, celebrating our 50th year this year, so from 1969 to 2019, be celebrating 50 years of serving Lackawanna County. So we're so grateful, and we love our clients so much, my staff, our volunteers. We're so lucky to interact with them. And over the past year, since I've been here, we've developed new programs to help them with some healthcare needs, some in-home needs, you know, to make that bridge between the meal and living independently and staying in their home and avoiding placement and keeping them where they want to be, which is, you know, that's what we all want. We want to be home. And for our most vulnerable seniors, we're blessed to be able to do that every day.
Thank you. Commissioner Cummings?
As a home health nurse, I deal with your office all the time, as well as in the county. And I appreciate all the work you do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Terriani? You have been doing a great job for a long time. You've upgraded your facility. It's a wonderful project, and I hope you're able to keep going forward forever, and hope to good work.
Thank you. We have been blessed this year to undergo some major renovations. We opened a new space in our underutilized building of-
Big building.
Big building, 40,000 square feet. And five, almost 8,000 square feet of space that hadn't been used, we were able to open the space at all of this year, supporting partnerships across community endeavors, and really to partner with other nonprofits and for events, meetings, and to the public to provide a supportive space for fundraisers and whatnot so that we can partner and keep more programming money in the community. And so we have wonderful, great events scheduled throughout the year. Actually have an event meeting right after this, so we're really excited about it, and all of that revenue goes to supporting our core mission, our home-delivered meals. So we're very happy this year.
I just think that Meals on Wheels is just great. I've gone out many times, and please get me down and call out a couple times this year again.
Absolutely.
The interaction is amazing. I was amazed when you get to the front door and you knock, and they're right at the front door waiting to see you, you know, and there's that, like, five minutes of chit-chat. And I know as much as the meal is nourishing to them, it's the interaction that really, really matters. And what's your phone number? Somebody wants to volunteer or come help out, what do they have to do?
Our phone number is 570-346-2421. You can find us on Facebook, Meals on Wheels Community Services of NEPA, or also, our website is MealsOnWheelsNEPA.org. And we respond to messages and emails, so we're easily found coming, stop by. I always welcome everybody around 11:30 as lunchtime. So stop by, because one of the things, as you mentioned, we really provide nutrition, but we provide safety, whether it's, you know, finding someone who's fallen and calling emergency services and working with first responders, or finding someone out in the snow who thought it, they could try and get their mail. And, you know, unfortunately, that happened last year. We were able to luckily get the gentleman inside and to emergency services, but these are very real occurrences, gas leaks. So volunteering and coming out or supporting and coming to an event is critical to, for us keeping our mission going for the next 50 years.
Congratulations on the first 50 and feeding our community, and like I said, the interaction is amazing. We have a check for you for, from Lackawanna County Senior Health there for $2,500.
Thank you so much.
Would you like to come to the front? Do we have the check? Okay.
I'm not gonna shake your hand.
All you gotta do is sign the back.
I don't know if I'm a remote deposit.
Yeah, I don't know if it'll fit, right? Should we go in front, or?
We just move the water bottle, we just hold the check up a little.
Should I do tippy toes?
Yeah, I was gonna say. Yeah, I was wondering, maybe like over your chin or something.
Hold it up just a little more. One, two, three, everybody look here.
Is it straight? What is it? Tell me what it is.
It's psycho.
Pause it now, good?
There you go.
There you go, yeah. Congratulations. Like you were saying, please, if anybody in the viewing audience would like to volunteer, reach out to Meals on Wheels. They would love to have more people there, right? Always can use a helping hand, right?
Absolutely.
And some drivers to go around and deliver these meals, a lot of-
Absolutely, especially in weather like today.
Yes.
That's projecting.
Yeah, with, yeah, with the weather's a little scary, and especially if people with SUVs and four-by-fours, that's a major plus.
Exactly.
Fran, do we have anybody here from, from the Visitors Bureau or no? Can we come, okay, we're talking about coming in to speak about the, okay, well, next time. Okay, opportunity for the public to address the board on agenda items only.
Joan Hodewannett, 101 Penn Avenue, Scranton, and my property taxes are paid. Okay, at the risk of having another discussion about this, I'm gonna talk about the payment register. I am well aware that none of the current Commissioners are under investigation with regards to the prison or any activity that is alleged to have occurred there. Having said that, I still believe it is essential that this issue be kept in the forefront of the public's mind so that they understand what happens when, over the years, there is a lack of oversight, particularly by citizens. So I noted on page two of 27 pages of the payment register that Myers, Breyer, Kelly LP had another payment of $57,295.78. Assuming that was with regard to the prison, that would bring the total of legal fees up to $749,186.78. I did not see any payments to Donatoni and Crichton, Montgomery McCracken, Wiley and Associates, Robert J. Donatoni and Associates, or Conrad O'Brien, PC. So if you add in then, the last known figure for the salaries paid to guards who are on paid leave, and I assume there are still four on paid leave, you add in that $761,833, you come up with the grand total of $1,511,019.78. And this is not why we pay taxes. You ever go down to Washington and visit the headquarters of the IRS, will see emblazoned on their building the following words, "Taxes is the, are the price we pay for civilization, not for investigations." One thing I would like to know is, when will Myers, Breyer, and Kelly conclude the work for which you engage them, namely the reviewing of the emails? Do we have any idea?
I thought they were done with them.
I would respond, Dave, I haven't talked to the reasons, but there was just not one set of requests for records that were made to the DA's office, made to other areas. So this is an ongoing situation. The original request was a 13.3 million items.
So this is continuing?
Well, I'm not saying there's a recent, but there may have been additional requests for records that they've reviewed on their latest bills. What?
Supreme Court.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry, yeah, they're, they're also, the other area that they're involved in, in December, they were in front of the Supreme Court on the subpoena, the breadth of the subpoena, and also whether it should have been heard in Lackawanna County, which a local court found that Lackawanna County was the proper place for the matter to be held. The AG's office appealed that to the Supreme Court, so that's what they were involved in in that issue. And I, as far as that, I have no idea what's going on with the investigation or the grand jury, but they have been involved in a number of facets, including review of the documents, which was the bulk of their work.
So it's possible we may see additional invoices from them in future months.
Anything possible. I mean, I can't, I can't surmise where this is going or what other documents they're gonna request it, but-
When were they first engaged?
I would have to look at my, I don't have that information readily available. It would be, it was, it was over a year. It was shortly after the records were seized.
Okay, well, I will be coming up every two weeks, or as often as I can be here, asking the same questions. I make no accusations against the current administration. It's simply that I think if the public begins to understand what a lack of oversight will do to any government agency, this is a prime example. And if you don't like this one, then take a look at the Scranton School District, and the other places, but that's why I think this is important, to raise the issue every time we meet. Next, item Resolution 19-0042, the quotes from Conex. I was looking at the attachment. I assume this has to do with 9/11 communications, and I tried to add up the total, came up with $142,472.99 for modifications for Engine 9, Engine 10, and the microwave. Is that going to be a one-year thing, and is that in the 2019 budget, or is that gonna be down the road, 2020 or later?
That will be explained when Mr. Hahn comes to the podium.
Okay, I'd like to know that. Item Resolution 19-0036, the engagement letter with McGrail, Merkel, Quinn &amp; Associates for the audit of the retirement pension fund. Does that have to be done as a standalone audit, or cannot that be rolled into the annual audit of County Services?
That has to be done as a standalone audit under the, under the state.
Okay, I was just curious. And finally, 19-0043, the software agreement with Tyler Technology. I don't question the need for software, software upgrades, and, you know, we're in the information age, so this is gonna be recurrent fact of life for all governments. But the total is, over five years, $3,340,956. Is that going to be starting in 2019, and is that projected for the current year budget, or will that start in 2020? I'd like to know that when Mr. Miller comes up. Thank you.
Okay, Resolutions 19-0037.
Thank you, Commissioners. This is a resolution approving current payables. Be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby approve the following payables. Lackawanna County General Fund, numbers 276519 through 277688 inclusive, totaling $3,458,328.88, and electronic fund transfers, including all payroll accounts, totaling $3,544,717.25.
Does the board have any questions? Controll, debil, or everything?
Everything's in order, Commissioners, and as Joan mentioned, there is another invoice for Myers, Breyer, and Kelly included in this batch of invoices.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion approving current payables. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Terriani?
Yes.
Yes, 19-0034.
Thank you, Commissioner. This is a resolution authorizing the filing of a redevelopment assistance capital program grant application for the Penn State Scranton Engineering Building Redevelopment Project, whereas Penn State Scranton proposes to renovate the former Granger Industrial Supply Building into an academic engineering building, with additional space being allocated as a maker space for area businesses to be located at 120 Ridgeview Drive, Dunmore, Pennsylvania. And whereas the County of Lackawanna is an eligible applicant for redevelopment assistance capital grant, RACP, funds as a source of finance, to finance the project. And whereas Lackawanna County desires to obtain funding from the Commonwealth's Redevelopment Assistance Capital Program for the project. And whereas Lackawanna County hereby authorizes the Chairman of Lackawanna County Board of Commissioners to sign and authorize all documents and accept any awards related to these redevelopment assistance capital program funds. Therefore, now be it resolved that the Lackawanna County Board of Commissioners is hereby authorized to file an application in the amount of $2,500,000 to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania for a redevelopment assistance capital program grant for the project. And here to address the board on that is Sandy Upchinsky, our Planning and Economic Development Grants Manager. Sandy?
Good morning, Sandy. How are you?
Good morning. How are you, sir? This project, Lackawanna County functions as a pass-through for RACP program grants. They purchased the Granger facility that is located next to the Worthington campus with the idea that they're going to expand their engineering department within our, you know, our local campus. We don't really have much of an engineering, Penn State is known widely as an engineering school, but we truly don't have that capability yet here in Dunmore. This is something that would, as I said, pass through our, our hands in enabling them to not only do the work that's needed on the Granger facility, but then would allow small businesses to have space to be able to have, like, a comprehensive hub, literally, for Penn State.
Okay, does the board have any questions for Sandy? Okay, I'd like to make a motion authorizing the filing of the redevelopment assistance capital program grant application for Penn State Scranton Engineering Buildings Redevelopment Project. Do I have a second? Roll call.
Yes.
Yes, thanks, Sandy.
Thank you.
19-0035.
Thank you, Commissioner. This is a resolution approving the Emergency Management Performance Grant. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby approve and authorize the grant submission by Lackawanna County to the Pennsylvania Emergency Management Agency for the federal fiscal year 2019 Emergency Management Performance Grant Agreement in the amount of $42,415.82. And here to address the board is Rich Barboish, our Emergency Management Deputy Director. Rich?
Good morning, Commissioner. How are you? This is our annual grant application for the grant which reimburses the county for 50% of the Emergency Management Coordinator's salary and benefits. This is the preliminary application. Further paperwork will be coming in the future for it.
Very good. Does the board have any questions for Mr. Barboish? Okay, I'd like to make a motion approving the Emergency Management Performance Grant. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, thanks, Rich. 19-0042.
Thank you, Commissioner. This is a resolution accepting the quotes from Conex. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby accept the quotes from Conex for $142,472.99 for updates for Engine 9, Engine 10, and Lackawanna County Government 911 tower sites. And here to address the board is Dave Hahn, our Director of Emergency Services. Dave?
Good morning, Dave.
Good morning, everybody. The reason we're here today is we've had some recent issues concerning 911. We lost 911 service for approximately 12 minutes in the past month, two times, that's six minutes at a piece. What's happening is our, our, our network rides on a microwave system throughout the county. We share a microwave system with the IT department. What's happening is we are sharing radios, what they're called, point-to-multi-point radios. And what a multi-point radio does is it shares traffic with 911. We're not supposed to be sharing traffic, we're supposed to be exclusive. So the way to fix our issue, we had an emergency meeting, and we, we discussed ways of fixing our issue, and like I said, our issue is, we did lose 911 service for six minutes at a time, twice. And it's, I know it's six minutes doesn't seem like a lot, but it is when you lose 911 service, of course. What happens is, we, we, we lost what they call, we're losing packets, when, when information is, goes over this network, it's called packets.
But the system starts to reboot immediately, doesn't it?
It starts to reboot absolutely immediately, but it takes six minutes to reboot, okay? What I, after we had the, the emergency meeting with the chiefs, we sat down, I sat down with Conex, and I sat down with Capital Communications, who is our vendor, we discussed the matter, and they came up with a fix for us, how we can fix this immediately, and that we would not have to worry about this again. So of course, it's the first time it happened, but it happened twice in a month. So I, the best way to describe it is just, there's too many packets going over the system to where 911 loses a transmission. Also, our, the way our phone switch is set up, we have 911, we have 911 on Jessup, we have 911 here in the Globe Store. If we have too many phone calls, or if that system fails, this system takes over automatically, and it goes through the microwave system to our building.
That's direct.
Direct. Well, no, it's not direct. It will be if we do this.
Once this, once you do this-
We ride in a loop right now.
Yeah.
We share information with-
This will be-
Right, this is direct. So what happens is, when that, when that occurs, if there's too much information in the system, we either lose the packets, or we have to wait in line. And when you wait in line, you, you lose the packets then, okay? So we have over 1,100 errors occurring daily at these other two sites. There's three sites total included in this package here. Engine 9 on Main Avenue, we have a radio site there. And Engine 10 on East Mountain, we have a radio site there. Those two sites fail daily, 1,100 times, about 1,100 times a day, because they are point-to-multi-point radios, okay? Now, they were never supposed to be multi-point, but they were. They need to be point-to-point, what they call point-to-point radios. So that is the, the transmission will go directly from, from 911 directly to that site, and there would be no other traffic on that, on that frequency. That, we would then be able to transmit at all times and receive at all times without any loss of packets. That is the fix for those two sites. So Engine 9 on Main Avenue, Engine 10 on East Mountain, they're the, they're the fixes to put point-to-point radios and remove the point-to-multi-point. So what I mean by multi-point is, if we get, if we transmit right now, if we're transmitting to the Scranton Police, or Scranton Fire, or an ambulance, and the magistrate has traffic, the libraries have traffic, we may lose that transmission, okay? Because they may take priority. Emergency service is supposed to be put on 4.9 megahertz is what- Emergency services is supposed to be put on 4.9 megahertz is what, it's, 4.9 is emergency services grade type of frequency. And all our radios are supposed to be on there. Well, they're not all on there. And what's, what happened is we lost a radio site totally during that cold weather snap. We lost the entire city of Carbondale because of the National Weather Service. We were put on 5.5 megahertz, which is the National Weather Service. By somebody in the IT department accidentally put us on 5.5. And what it did is every time the National Weather Service would broadcast a, an announcement, it would shut down our radio site. So I had an emergency, we had a, that day, we had to have it transferred back to 4.9. So we lost that, we lost that site. We've since corrected that. We had an extra radio and we put a point-to-point from Salem Tower in, in Carbondale to the, what they call the icon building where our, we have a site. So we have a point-to-point radio there, so we've, we've corrected that issue. That, that cost, that only costs us $243 or something to fix. So we, we fixed that. It's done. The, the path from Jessup to the Globe Store here, to our tower on the roof that we put on the roof here, we would have a point-to-point connection from Jessup to here, which would take us out of the loop and we would never lose traffic at that point. We'd never lose radio traffic and we would never lose the 911 service. So that's the fix for this facility. So there's, there's three quotes in here and, and she's exactly right, it came out, the three quotes, if we decide to do all three was... So that's the fix to have everything brought up to date to where we will not have these issues which we've just experienced again. And it is an emergency-type situation because we can't afford to lose 911 service. And the only way to, really, the only way to fix it is, is a point-to-point radio. So these point-to-point radios have to be installed. There'll be three radios installed on our tower here at the Globe Store. There'll be, you know, one to Engine 9, one to Engine 10, and one to Jessup from here. And then, of course, you know, our, our pipe of information will be from Jessup directly to the, that radio and then we would broadcast out of here, which we have, I want to say we have seven or eight frequencies here that we transmit from the roof of the Globe Store now. We moved from 200 atoms to here.
Yeah, Commissioner, I would just say that Dave advised us of this situation. We came aware of it. I called an emergency meeting last week with him and IT. We got together up at 911 and I said, what's, we gotta fix this because evidently lives could be on the line with this type of situation. This is not something that can be put aside. We also met with Tom Durkin, our CFO, and there is money available to get this done. So this is a co-stars program. Additionally, it's an emergency situation and additionally, it's Conex technology, so it doesn't need to be put out for bid. Okay? Because of the fact that they're an exclusive provider and it's their technology, so they're, it's technology on their part, so. We're recommending that...
I guess I got long-winded. Sorry.
We're recommending that the Board of Commissioners adopt this and we can move ahead with it. And Dave, when can this be in place by, if it's approved today by the board?
Well, if it's approved today, I will notify them. And of course, like I said, it, weather depending, before anybody can climb towers, they won't, an icy situation, snowy, you know, two below zero, they won't climb towers until, you know, it's time.
It's gonna be 52 this weekend.
Well, they might, they might jump on it, they'll jump on it as soon as they can. There's no doubt about it. I would say probably within a month's time, we can, we can have at least everything installed.
Great.
Thank you.
Yeah. The key is making sure that everybody's safe.
Yeah.
Okay. Beautiful. Any other questions? I'd like to make a motion accepting the quotes from Conex. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Yes.
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 Thank you very much.
Thanks, Dave.
Thank you, Dave.
19 dash 0036.
Thank you, Commissioner. This is a resolution entering into an agreement with McGreal, Merkel, and Quinn and Associates. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby enter into an engagement letter with McGreal, Merkel, Quinn, and Associates for the Lackawanna County Retirement Pension Plan Audit for the year ending December 31, 2018 for a fixed cost of $11,000. And here to address the board is our Controller, Gary DeBilleo. Gary?
Hey, Gary.
Hi, Commissioners. This is our, this proposal is our annual outside audit of our county retirement fund. The resolution engages the county to have Merkel, McGreal, Merkel, and Quinn Associates once again perform the audit, which it has done since 2005. They're doing the audit for the same cost as last year, $11,000. And the Controller's office would agree with this engagement if the Commissioners choose to do so.
Okay. Does the board have any questions? I'd like to make a motion entering an engagement letter with McGreal, Merkel, Quinn, and Associates. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Terriani? Yes.
Yes.
Yes. 19 dash 0039.
Thank you, Commissioner. This is a resolution entering into a lease agreement. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby enter into a lease agreement with Hale Trailer Brake and Wheel to lease approximately two acres of land at 1280 Mid Valley Drive, Jessup, to commence March 1, 2019 at the price of $1,500 a month. Here to address me, the board is me. Okay? Basically, we were contacted by Hale Trailer. They own the property next door to our Roads and Bridges building up in Jessup. We have acreage up there we don't use. They asked us about leasing it from us. They wanted to lease some property. We had Larry Lukasik, our engineer, look at it. They determined it was about two acres that we could lease to them that would not interfere with our operations and we're not using. Basically, it's just vacant land sitting there. So this, we're gonna enter into a month-to-month lease with them. It's empty trailers, they're gonna park empty container trailers on the property and move them on and off, and they're gonna pay us $1,500 a month to do so.
Nothing stored in them, just...
There's nothing stored in them, no. No, and there's a provision in the lease, no waste or hazards or anything like that can be stored on the property, correct? Yeah, yeah, no, nothing dangerous, so.
Okay. Does the board have any questions? I'd like to make a motion entering into a lease agreement. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Terriani?
Yes.
Commissioner Mally?
Yes. 19 dash 0040.
Thank you, Commissioner. Do we want to combine 0040 and 041? They're both the LERTAs for the city of Scranton.
I don't, the board doesn't care. Yeah, I don't think so.
Okay, we're combining the two of them because they're both, okay. This is a resolution under the Deteriorating Real Property and Area of Tax Exemption Act for residential properties. And 0041 is approving an economic LERTA program for industrial and other business properties located within the city of Scranton. Whereas the Deteriorated Real Property and Areas Tax Exemption Act 724711 enacted by the General Assembly of Pennsylvania authorizes local tax authorities to exempt improvements to certain deteriorating residential and commercial property in certain areas. And whereas the New Home Construction Local Tax Abatement Act enacted by the General Assembly of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania authorizes local taxing authorities to exempt improvements to certain unimproved residential real property. And whereas City Council, in accordance with the act, held a public hearing on December 3, 2018 for the purpose of determining the boundaries of deteriorated areas eligible for tax exemption under the act. And whereas, the county desires to adopt the findings of the municipal governing body of the public hearing regarding the boundaries of deteriorated areas eligible for tax exemption under the act and encouraging new industrial, commercial, and business development in such deteriorated areas through the use of the tax exemptions under the act. Now therefore be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County as follows. Exemption: A full 10-year tax exemption from real property shall be limited to the exemption schedules as established by this resolution, the assessment valuation attributable to the cost of construction of the improvement to the deteriorated residential or commercial property and area. In all cases, the exemption from taxes shall be limited to that portion of the additional assessment attributable to new construction and for the separate assessment that has been made by the Lackawanna County Board of Assessment Appeals for which an exemption has been separately requested. No tax exemption shall be granted if the property owner does not secure the necessary improper permits prior to construction. No tax exemption shall be granted if the property owner is delinquent in the payment of real property taxes and any property within the city of Scranton at the time the application was exempt. Schedule of exemption: The following real estate tax exemption shall commence in the tax year immediately following the year in which the building permit is issued. For a 10 years in which the newly constructed improvement would otherwise be taxable at 100% of the eligible assessment shall be exempted. The exemption from taxes granted in this resolution shall be upon newly constructed, improved, on deteriorating property and any area residential or commercial property and shall not terminate upon the sale or exchange of the property, but shall continue for the full time originally granted. If a deteriorated property and area containing a new improvement is granted tax exemption pursuant to this resolution, the property shall not, during the exemption period, be considered as a factor in assessing the value of the properties in the same area. In the use of deteriorating property in the area at the time of exemption is granted, is notified, is modified, terminated, or changed during the 10-year exemption period in any way which would have affected the exemption if the property has been so used when the exemption was granted, then at the election of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, the exemption shall terminate as to the date when the use was modified or terminated. The, the area, eligible areas has been determined and declared by the Board of Commissioners that the following portion of the city qualify and is hereby designated as eligible for tax exempt status, the entire city of Scranton. The resolution shall become effective March 1, 2019, and its terms shall continue in effect without annual approval for a period of five years. So this resolution will remain in effect for a five-year period, Commissioners. And that's, that's the guts of it. Basically, they're looking for a 10-year exemption on the new improvements to residential and/or commercial property in the city. It'll be a 10-year abatement on the improvement, not the entire property, just the improvement that is made. And here to address the board is Bruce Reddick from the Chamber. Bruce?
Good morning, Bruce.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for your time.
Bruce, this would be, we'd still pay on the land itself, right?
That is correct.
And then everything else would be basically exempt, right?
Assuming there is an improvement made once legislation is moved forward. So existing improvements that are made to the property are still taxed at their fullest capacity. Any improvements that are made thereafter, be mindful that it's a reassessable improvement. So if you were to finish your basement or if you were to install, I don't know, if you were to redo your bathroom, that's not considered a reassessable improvement. So that wouldn't be considered a, a tax benefit there. Only additions to...
Any additions, actual square footage to a building and stuff like that.
That is correct.
And only the exemption exempt, Commissioners, not the entire building. So like if you have a warehouse and you add, you know, let's say...
Yeah, square footage. Square footage, not the existing property itself.
That is correct. Everything is still paid. So, so in partnership with the city, the school board, and Lackawanna County, of course, nobody loses their tax base that's currently existing.
And for the, for the home builders, if somebody's buying a piece of property, they're just gonna pay for the actual land tax?
That is correct.
And they're gonna build a brand-new house and...
That is correct. So their new improvement, of course, would be tax-free essentially.
For 10 years, except for the property itself.
Property itself would still be paid in taxes, correct.
Does the board have any questions?
Yeah, I do.
Go ahead.
Um, this is for the entire city of Scranton, so that means, what does that mean? The whole entire city of Scranton, every property is gonna be considered deteriorating property?
They have to sign up for it, don't they? It's, they have to sign it individually, right?
That is correct. As part of the resolution, they have to file a permit as part of their, their new development or the improvements that they make. So yes, this does cover the entire city of Scranton. Be mindful that really this is, this is a means to help encourage and promote development within the city, ultimately furthermore impacting Lackawanna County, of course.
I don't know. I'm just wondering how this affects the residents and their, their properties. Does, I mean, are you saying to me that every property, including every business, is now going to be considered a deteriorating property in the entire city of Scranton?
Yeah, the city of Scranton held a hearing and that's what they determined, that the entire city qualifies as deteriorated. Yes.
But this is like, I think what the Commissioners get into is this is the actual effect of the, the tax base itself. In other words, like, the tax base is basically the tax base. Now, I'm a business owner. I'm adding 30,000 square feet onto my building. That becomes a savings for you when you do that.
That is correct.
The current as it stands is what it is.
That is correct.
So if I go, just go buy a piece of property that just has land tax on it and there's nothing there, and I build a structure, land tax still comes in, but the property itself, the rest of the taxes aren't there.
That is correct. So ultimately, we look at this as...
So basically, I think the big thing is the tax base, we still are gonna...
It remains the same.
...save up a lot of money, but we're gonna try to enhance bringing people in.
Correct. And we look at, we look at this as investment to the future. So you invest now, I say invest, but you, you provide this LERTA incentive now. 10 years from now, when all those properties that provided those improvements come back onto the tax rolls, you should see a substantial amount of tax dollars coming into Lackawanna County in addition to anything else that's coming in, of course.
I, I understand how LERTA works. I understand what you're saying, but to glare the entire city of Scranton, a deteriorated residential and business, every building, every home, how does that affect the homeowners? Does that affect the homeowner in any way? I mean, is there any consequences that they could face as a homeowner that now their house is now considered deteriorated? I mean, I don't understand how...
I think the designation deterioration would apply for LERTA purposes only.
No, it's the entire city of Scranton.
No, I understand it, but, but for purposes of the enabling legislation only.
Where does it say that?
Oh, it doesn't. Yeah, I mean...
It does not say that.
I mean, that's how I would construe it.
But it doesn't say that, John. It's the entire city of Scranton. That's what it says right here under Section 1. Eligible areas. The whole city of Scranton. No exceptions. So if you build a brand-new home, you buy, like Commissioner was saying, you get a property, you build a brand-new home, it's considered to be deteriorating property. How, how could that possibly be a good thing? I don't understand.
Purposes of, of a LERTA tax exemption. That, that's how I would interpret it. It doesn't, I, I wouldn't, I don't believe the intent would be to do it for other purposes.
And that is correct. So this has nothing to do, of course, with the Act 47 situation. This is strictly for the LERTA designation only. So if you're looking in terms of property values, if this affects property values in any way, it doesn't. Again, be mindful, your tax assessment is based on the current conditions, not, not with, with the understanding of the fact that there's a LERTA in place. So your current conditions as well as the current value of the property, that's how your, your taxes are assessed essentially.
Are you sure that it would only be used on an additional, I mean, if they're saying, Donnie, if they're saying every single property in Scranton is now listed as, it says, adopting a resolution providing for tax exemption for certain deteriorated residential properties within the county, defining initial eligible deteriorated areas, providing for an exemption schedule, and establishing standards and qualification for participants. And then, under eligible areas, it says it is hereby determined and declared by the Board of Commissioners and the following, the following portion of the city qualify and are designated as areas eligible for tax exempt status, the whole city of Scranton.
Correct.
So it's every single property?
That's correct. Yes, any property in the city of Scranton qualify for, be eligible for LERTA. That is correct.
Commissioner, I'm wondering if...
But is it because they're deteriorated property?
That's the determination the city made, Commissioners, so.
And required by state law.
Required by state law.
Commissioner, I'm wondering, would, would you be more amenable to it if a provision was added to this, which would indicate the determination applies to the LERTA law and, for no other purposes? Do you, you follow what I mean? And I'm just wondering if a qualification like that would...
I think it would help. I mean, I don't know what it helped, Donnie. Would that be a good, I don't know. I mean, I just can't imagine if my house was now all of a sudden a deteriorated property, what does that mean to me?[1623.13]
I don't think-
I think it has to just, it's the designation is that, and it's not that your house is deteriorated, but it gives you an option if you wanted to add on that extra room.
Right, ultimately, it's a qualifier.
You're not going to get reassessed where you're going to get-
I think the purpose of the resolution in-
It's a spur of construction growth in that city.
If there's a vacant piece of land in Scranton, and you wanted to build a house, you can come build a house, and you basically get 10 years of no tax on the house. You'd have to pay on the land still, but the house, you'd have 10-year exemption. So I think it's a tool to try to get people to move into the city of Scranton.
That is correct.
And the K O Zs were complete zero out, like you paid nothing for the K O Zs.
K O Zs are different.
I'm not saying that it's big money, but it's some properties, like the land bank, you know what I mean? I see this as an enhancement to selling properties. We're, I mean, we're at 80-some properties right now. This is going to give people, there's properties out there in different developments that no one will touch them because they know that their taxes are going to be very high. Now, they may go into these other developments and finish off the last five or six lots at such-and-such development, this development, and 10 years from now, they're going to be reassessed. But people don't realize, they think, I don't know if it was last year, I think there was only like one or two home constructions in the whole city of Scranton.
That is correct.
That's because of the tax, that's because of the laws in Scranton. I mean, how would you feel about moving to a city that was declared every property to be deteriorated? It's, I don't know. I mean, I don't live in Scranton. You guys live in Scranton. If this is okay with you guys, I mean, I just don't, I don't understand how you can, there's got to be repercussions to this that we're not, I mean, I have no idea. I'm just saying, I just don't feel comfortable.
I think the designation is only related to the LERTA, Commissioner. I don't know that it necessarily means that every property in the city, I mean, clearly every property is not deteriorating in the city. I mean, there's, you know, there's some nicer areas in the city, but-
You literally have to sign, it's not like you're just that. You have to, okay, I buy the property, I have to sign up for this, right? To have this option.
And Commissioner, just to further clarify, all this designation is ultimately doing is establishing the boundaries of which you, as a resident in the city of Scranton, could ultimately take advantage of the LERTA program. It's not placing a label on anyone's specific place of business or their house. It's just identifying the boundaries of within where the LERTA program could actually be applied to.
Okay, so if I have a house up in East Mountain?
That is correct.
Okay. Or up by the lake?
Okay.
And I want to add something on to one of these mansions up there. Would that mansion be considered eligible for this LERTA?
Again, yes, because it's within the boundaries. There's no label placed on your specific place of residence. As long as you're within those boundaries, which are identified under the LERTA ordinance, which we've established, obviously being the city of Scranton, it would be eligible. Now, the one thing I do want to add, per the legislation that was signed by the state of Pennsylvania, I believe in 1972, if I'm correct, it does have, the ordinance has to be approved essentially by your local redevelopment authority or your local planning commission, which, in the city of Scranton, we've already taken it to that point. So we held a public meeting. Don King provided his input, and he basically said to us, this would be eligible conditions under the LERTA, to blanket the entire city, or to establish boundaries around the entire city.
Well, I'm just trying to look out for the residents of Scranton. I mean, I don't want to somehow vote for something that's going to hurt their property values or their, I have no idea. Does this affect property value or anything?
I don't know.
I mean, I've heard other cities did this, but I just-
Is your concern that the designation could be used maybe for, by insurance companies for other purposes?
Yeah, it's like insurance and-
Or for possibly government studies or something like that, that could have an effect elsewhere?
Or the land bank could come in and say, you know what? That's a deteriorated property, the city needs to condemn it, and it's really not.
I think if the enabling legislation limited it some way, that deterioration only means for purposes of LERTA. And it may mean that right now, but it's not in there, okay? I mean, that's what I would suggest, if you have a resident-
I would think that actually the LERTA designation could actually increase the value of properties in Scranton, because you can, you know, you have a lot, you're going to sell a lot, you're going to put a house, you have 10-year tax exemption. People are like, who, I'll pay taxes for 10 years?
Oh, that would.
Yeah, yeah.
But we're talking about every property being listed as a deteriorated property in order for that to happen. That's where I have a concern. I mean, I have a problem with the LERTA.
There's no list established that says, you know, 123 Smith Street is considered deteriorated property. It just says that, again, the boundaries around the city of Scranton allow you, as a resident, if you have a home, or if you have a business, or a piece of land, and if you want to add on in any such way, it allows you to take advantage of this program. There's no list that identifies you as an individual.
LERTA is the umbrella, and you sign up for this if you want this for your-
That is correct.
But you get it, because the whole entire city of Scranton, every property is now looked at as deteriorated property. That's what it says in this resolution. So, I mean, I could, back and forth, we can continue to do this back and forth. I'm just concerned with-
I would just think that-
Different aspects of it, and I'm trying to look out for the city residents, but I don't feel comfortable voting either way, because I'm not sure if there are any implications. Maybe there's not. Maybe I just don't know enough about the issue. I don't know.
I would just suggest, Commissioner, that we're not the ones actually making that determination. The city of Scranton, they held their hearing, and they've already approved this, and they've determined that their city is qualifying, eligible.
I'm sure, I'm sure they did. But unless they put it, I mean, I don't know. If they did this in Old Forge, I think I'd be pretty upset. So if my house was, all of a sudden, a deteriorated property, I'd want to know how that affects me as a taxpayer, as a homeowner. That's all I'm saying, and I just don't know the answer to that question, and nobody here is giving me really the answer to that question, so I'll have to, you know, adapt. For that reason, I would abstain from the vote. I just don't feel that I can vote on that.
Any other questions? Okay. The county took on the land bank, December of 2015, and the city itself was unaffordable. The city just couldn't channel having the land bank. We took it over with the fact that we'd eventually be going outside the city. The city had the largest amounts of properties that needed to get back on the tax roll. And we needed that way to cut through the red tape, and get the liens away from these properties, and get people the properties they wanted. And the land bank was up for approximately a year, and then I think we're actually actively selling properties for the last year and so many months, year and a half, and we're at about 80-some properties. We're going to hit 100 probably in the next few months. There's a lot of properties that are going to be coming through the land bank, and there's a lot that are on the repository. I think this is going to give some, a breath of fresh air into these properties to be able to construct on them. And I look at this as a spur of construction. Years ago, when I built my house in Fawnwood Heights, they had a two-year first-time home builder situation, where you paid the land tax for the first two years you owned the house, and that was the incentive. And we were thrilled. We were thrilled for that. We're a young couple in our 20s, we built our new house. Knowing what's gone on in the last year or two, that there's only been like two houses built in the city of Scranton, and it really isn't, no one's really adding on, because they're concerned about the square footage and being re-incessed, and, you know, the amount of taxes going up, I think this is a great opportunity where it's going to work for a lot of people. All construction people are going to go back to work, people are going to get their houses the way they want them to be, and I think there's going to be a lot of growth. And I just think that, look, I think we have to, we're always trying to look outside the box, and we're always trying to be innovative, and I think that the county did the first part by taking on the land bank, something the city couldn't do. We did it. Now, I feel like this is another tool for us to be able to sell more properties through the land bank and through the repository, and get them back on the tax roll, even if it's just the land tax to start with the eventual increase with the 10 years, you know, coming up. Most of these properties, we're not getting anything for at this point. At least, at the worst, we're getting property, the money for the property, but we're going to have new construction going on and new opportunities. And a lot of developments, and I know a lot of them, there's these four or five properties that just won't be sold, because nobody wants to go near them because of the cost. I believe that most of these developments will be finished, and maybe some of these older neighborhoods, where we still have some larger lots that are the 50 by 150 or 100 by 150, we can start doing those construction projects. The people who buy those 40 by 1 or deep properties, that we call side lots, will have an opportunity to put garages on them. I just see a lot of options here, and I think it's worth its while, and I will definitely be voting for it. I really truly believe in this.
Thank you.
So, I'd like to make a motion for 19-0040 and 19-0041. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Terriani?
Yes.
Commissioner Cummings?
I'm going to abstain for the reasons I previously stated.
Commissioner Malley?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners. I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Commissioner. This is a resolution entering into a software agreement with Tyler Technology. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby enter into a software as a service agreement with Tyler Technologies to update the software for the single tax office and all county land record offices. Here to address the board is Paul Miller from Tyler Technologies, and I believe the Recorder of Deeds, Evy McNulty is also here. Evy?
Hi, Paul. How are you?
Good. How are you doing?
Good morning.
Thank you very much for having us here. We really appreciate partnership with the county. It's very important what you guys are doing here, updating your systems, but beyond that, you have the vision, your leadership has the vision to connect the offices electronically as much as possible to minimize both human error and the need for human interaction when transferring data from system to system. So we think this project's going to take you a long way to modernizing multiple offices.
Does the board have any questions? I'd like to make a motion entering into a software agreement with Tyler Technologies. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Terriani?
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Malley?
Yes. Thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
Thank you. 19, excuse me, 19-0038?
Thank you, Commissioners. An appointment to the Lackawanna County Land Bank Board of Directors. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby appoint the following individual to the Lackawanna County Land Bank Board of Directors. Wayne Beck, Treasurer for the City of Scranton. This is a city appointment, and the mayor had sent us a letter requesting that Mr. Beck be put on the board as a city representative.
Okay, does the board have any questions? I'd like to make a motion for the appointment to Lackawanna Land Bank Board of Directors. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Terriani?
Yes.
Commissioner Cummings?
Yes.
Commissioner Malley?
Yes. I'd like to say that Mr. Beck has a, he has asset to the land bank board. Okay. Opportunity for the public to address the board.
Joan Hodewana, 201 Penn Avenue, Scranton. First, I want to publicly recognize ECTV. Is that you over there? There you are. Last time I was here, I announced a play by Sandra Burgett Miller, Tell 'Em, Slavery to Waverly. It was the story of her great-great-grandfather, who was a slave in 1848, and he ran away and rode the Underground Railroad to Waverly, Pennsylvania. She wrote a book about it, and she turned that into a play, which was presented at the Cultural Center, or those of us old enough, Masonic Temple, on February 8th and 9th, and graciously, ECTV went ahead and taped it. So I'm going to get-
I saw it. I actually saw it.
Wasn't it great?
It was very, very good. It was very interacting. They're right there on stage. It was, yeah, it was really something different.
Going to take those DVDs, I'm going to put one at the Abington Library, which services Waverly, because they need that as part of their local history. And a copy will go down to the Scranton Public Library, because that's where the Burgett family eventually resided. And one of the things that libraries do, or should do, is to maintain a record of local history, because if your historical societies and your public libraries don't do it, that's lost. And we need to have a sense of where we've come from, if we want to understand where we're going. So thank you, ECTV, for taking the initiative to do that. Speaking of the library, Evy McNulty down there, she is the newest born member of the Scranton Public Library, and a fine addition she is. And also with the library, February 26th through March 3rd's our next book sale. We take cash, credit cards, and debit cards. So that will give you the hours. We're on the second floor of the marketplace at Steamtown, right in front of Crunch Gym. We sell books, paperback and hardcover, children's books, adult books, all kinds of books, cookbooks, any kind of book you want. We sell DVDs, VHS tapes, CDs, whatever we can get our hands on, for $1 or $2 max. So come and get some good bargains. It all goes to support of the Scranton Public Library. With regard to the resolutions on LERTA, my only question is, is somebody going to keep a database, hopefully with software that we're paying for with Tyler, so that when the 10-year LERTA exemption expires, somebody is sure to make sure that they get on the tax rolls? Are we going to have another Electric City parking garage situation? That's my concern, okay? Because 10 years from now, are we going to have an oopsie? Or is that stuff going to automatically start getting, the revenues start rolling into our coffers if we start doing this?
I can answer that.
Yes.
Yes, our system can be set up for a LERTA program where either percentages are rolled in each year, or it gets sunsetted 10 years from now, and you set it up when they enter the program, so that, you know, traditionally, a lot of people follow it on Excel spreadsheets and things like that.
That should be automated, and that should be automatic, so we don't have to have another situation where somebody, you know, nobody realized that they should change the tax status of an entity. That was, that's the only thing I hope, that if you do this, you do it, okay? And the last question I have is, has everybody moved into the new government center, or all the offices in?
Yeah, everybody's in.
Everybody's in, so, and you got all your space occupied, you're busting at the seams?
No, we still have space down the cellar, but it's product storage and stuff like that.
I mean, above the cellar. You know, you-
We have all the space, basically.
The entire building, yeah, the entire building is occupied.
Okay, that's good.
There was an editorial in the Scranton Times this week-
I saw that.
-where some guy said it can fit all the offices on two floors. I'd like to see that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I saw that too.
I want to see that with a shoehorn.
Like to see that.
You must be thinking about the reception area that we have downstairs, where that's going to be, that's like a community area. That's a lot of different things, so.
Yeah. And when will we start getting a sensing of what this move and the acquisition of this building and its renovation costs us? I mean, how far down the road before we start getting a handle on what we actually had to pay?
We'll answer that under Commissioner's New Business.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Cummings?
Yeah, I see him.
Okay. Commissioner Terriani?
Nope.
Okay. Yeah, Joan, those numbers will be coming together really soon. Tom's going to be keeping an eye on all of it, so, I mean, we're pretty close to as budgeted as possibly at this point, but the numbers will be coming out probably in the next month or month and a half. There's still, there's still a certain amount of money that's held up until the construction project is completely finished. There is going to be people in this building for quite a few months. There will be a punch list where maintenance and everybody else will go through the building and make sure that this scratch is fixed, this rug is fixed, this is done, this is done, and anybody that's ever done construction projects before, there's a large amount of money that's held up, so they don't get that until everything is completely and utterly done. So that will be over the next so many months.
On that point, can I just make one point?
Go ahead.
Commissioner. One thing that's always lost in the message for this, the cost in this building, our rents totaled $1.5 million. So our payback that we're presuming is going to be 1.3. So we have an additional $200,000 in savings from the purchase of this building. It is not a cost to the taxpayers.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
And that's what they always fail to talk about, how our rents are no longer, the total of our rents were more than what we're going to be paying as a loan for a payback for the money. And, you know, that's what people fail to hear about, other than here. So we're going to be actually making money, not paying rents or losing money. There was no cost to the taxpayers. The $18 million was allotted for, and we have a $200,000 surplus from that, with the rents no longer there. In addition to other costs, like, actually, Evy had brought up to us about, you know, consolidating some of the equipment in the offices, where she helped to make sure that, you know, we found other savings as well in regards to that. So just, Commissioner, I just wanted to make sure, because, I mean, I had somebody tell me that, you know, $18 million, how come we could spend $18 million, but we can't do a reassessment? We didn't spend technically $18 million, because the loan that we're paying back is less than what we were paying for every year in rents. So it's a wash. So it's wash. There was no additional $18 million taken out. I mean, there was, but it's, it's gonna be paid for by the rent amounts that we used to pay. We would've been paying that amount every month anyway, every year.
The money's in place, and that's the truth. A lot of people don't really realize that the fact is, this is a building owned by the taxpayers of Lackawanna County, something that three administrations back couldn't accomplish, but this administration had it done in three years. So, I mean, this was a no-brainer. You know, I mean, this was something that had to be done, and the money's there, and there's gonna be, the savings, we're gonna really hit the savings when we're here, at least like one year out. We get to next December, we start seeing where we're at on, jeez, I mean, our electric bill, our gas bill, water bill, we're not gonna, I mean, we're gonna have tremendous savings all over the map here. And we're, we're in the only building in downtown Scranton that was absolutely available that could hold everything that we have. We went from 13 locations to five locations in the downtown area. No one has to run around. There was maps all over downtown showing where you had to go. There was a kiosk that was purely for showing where all the offices were in Lackawanna County Government. Once the people get used to the idea that we're in one building, all they do is walk through the door, and they can find out exactly where they have to go.